Good morning. We call to order the Stearns County Commissioners Board meeting for February 5, 2019. The first item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call will show that all Commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Nodch. First item on the agenda is Public Access Form. Anyone wishing to speak at the Public Access Form today? Anybody wishing to speak? Last call. Anybody wishing to speak? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the next item. Consent Agenda. Commissioners, we have the Consent Agenda in front of us. Anybody wishing to pull an item off the Consent Agenda? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Randy?
Well, just a clarification. I think in the minutes you might have saw, it looked like the Human Services Consent Agenda was not approved, but that was just kind of a little computer glitch. So it was approved unanimously.
Okay, correction to the minutes in the Consent Agenda? Okay. Motion to approve? Commissioner Landsmeyer, Second Commissioner Mergon, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next item we have on the agenda is Human Services, I believe. Yeah, come on forward.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Melissa Huberty, Human Services Administrator. And I only have one item on the agenda this morning, and it's on page 21. It's Item C1, and I'm available for questions.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. If not, do we need to move forward and approve that?
Yes.
Okay, let's have, okay, I'll take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
I'll move it.
Motion by Commissioner Clark, Second, by Landsmeyer, Lee?
Okay.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Anything else?
No.
That was quick. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Don't fall on the ice.
I was trying not to.
Okay, the next item we have is a public hearing. Public hearing on a proposal for fee changes.
We have a few people to help present on that item. If we could have Sarah come up and Ben.
Do we have to wait until 9:10 for the public hearing or however?
Oh. Probably, should we? Protocol, perhaps we should. Yeah, can we?
Take forward Public Works? Yeah. Jody's always right.
Good morning. Jody Tyke, County Engineer. My first item today is I'm asking the Board to approve and authorize final payment for SAP 073-609-039. And that project was resurfacing along County Road 9 between County Roads 52 and 17. This work took place primarily in 2017, cleanup work in 2018. Final contract value was almost $13,000 under the original contract price. Asking the Board to approve and authorize that final payment.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve, Second?
I'll second.
Second, Commissioner Landsmeyer. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
For my next item, I'm asking the Board to authorize advertising for bids for SAP 073-609-041. And this project is replacing Structure 92034 along County Road 9 southwest of Avon. This is the structure that's been load posted very low recently after a structural analysis was done on it. I'm asking the Board to approve the bid opening date of February 28, 2019.
Motion by Commissioner Clark?
Second.
Second by Landsmeyer. Any discussion?
You tired, Jeff?
All those in favor? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
My next item is a MINDOT detour agreement. This summer, they will be doing improvements along Trunk Highway 15. So as part of that, they want to detour Trunk Highway traffic onto a portion of our County Road 7 that runs from Fairhaven to St. Augusta, up into St. Cloud at I-94. The actual reimbursement amount by MINDOT will be based on the number of days that that detour is in place in carrying Trunk Highway traffic. It is estimated at this point to be just over $48,000. Along with that agreement, all MINDOT agreements require a resolution that authorizes the County Board Chair and the Auditor Treasurer that authorizes them to execute the agreement. So I'm asking the Board to approve Agreement Number 1033127 and adopt the corresponding resolution.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve the detour?
I'll second.
And a second by Landsmeyer. Any discussion? Jody, just, it just amazes me the cost of put a detour on. It just, I just, I'm amazed at the cost that it takes to do that, so.
Well, it, that reimbursement is actually based on the amount of life that's taken out of that pavement because of the additional traffic that's placed on the road. And the amount of truck traffic that would be typically on a Trunk Highway is now on our county road.
All right.
So oftentimes, we think that amount is low, but they've got a formula they base it on, so.
Okay, all right. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
So for my next item, as you may be aware, MINDOT is soliciting local road improvement program applications. There is no funding allocated by the Legislature at this point, but they want to be ready to go for project selection in the event the Legislature would allocate some money to that program. So thus far, the City of Belgrade and Leesock Township have asked us to sponsor their applications because they are not state aid entities, which means you have to be a county or a city over 5,000. They do need a project sponsor. Both the City of Belgrade and Leesock Township understand what their responsibilities would be should they be awarded this money. So in your packets on Pages 39 and 41, there are two resolutions agreeing to sponsor those applications, and I'm asking the Board to adopt those resolutions.
Those resolutions to support, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Clark, Second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Mergon? With that, I want to comment that Leesock Township, that town line road, I don't know if any of the Commissioners have been out to that road, but that's on the west side of Sartell, and that involves five different government bodies. That's City of Sartell, City of St. Joe, Leesock Township, also St. Wendell Township, and then Brockway Township. And the road is in terrible shape. It's basically built through a swamp. It's built through a sponge. But because it belongs to the Townships, and St. Wendell Township only has three driveways on the two-mile stretch, they have no money to do it. And so they need the funding to get that road fixed. And that's the backside of the new high school that's going to be opening. And I'm quite concerned about, you know, future safety on that road. And so somehow, we're looking to get some funding for that road. All the municipalities are coming together trying to figure out a way to do it. But again, at the local level, they don't have the funding for it. So hopefully, the Legislature might be able to help with this project.
As a side note, the City of St. Stephen did receive funding in the last round of solicitations. So they will be potentially starting that project this summer and then finishing it next year. They would obviously only tear up what they could finish, but they did get funding for their portion of it within the City of St. Stephen, so.
So there is hope, so. But again, with that new high school opening, any traffic coming from the west or from the northwest, I think is going to use that road, and it's quite dangerous. So I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
The only miscellaneous item I have is just a very brief update. We had a public meeting last week on Tuesday, or yeah, Monday night, excuse me, for the County Road 138, 28th Avenue improvements. We actually did have a really good turnout despite the cold weather. We've got a lot of opinions on it. I will be meeting with the City of Wake Park during a work session with the Council next Monday. And we will be looking at funding that we both have available over the next few years and whether a roundabout or a traffic signal is the best option. There were some mixed opinions, but I would say the majority of opinions at that public meeting were that a roundabout should go in place. And as you're all probably aware, that is just to the east of the service center, where obviously we'll have additional services offered in the near future. So that traffic is only going to increase. But again, we had a very good turnout. I was pleased, given the weather. And I should be giving you a more formal update at some point within the next month, month and a half as to how we can fit that into our road program and how we will fund our portion of that because it will be a split with the City of Wake Park. And that's all I have unless anyone has anything for me.
Just general question, Jody. How about the roads? I mean, the last two days have been just terrible.
Yeah, and the problem with the ice that we had ahead of time is we can put down the salts and it melts. Certainly, salt is much less effective. Once you hit 15 degrees or below, it works a lot more slowly. So it, of course, is much less effective. It basically serves more as traction until it starts to take effect. But then what happens is yesterday afternoon, we had the brief period of sunshine. That salt really started to work. And then, as we got later in the afternoon, we had a refreeze as the wind started to blow. And so then we did have more ice on the roads, and our crews were out again this morning. Yesterday, they were out at 2:00 in the morning. This morning, they were out between 2:00 and 3:00, depending where you were in the county. And it's a fighting battle. We're certainly going through more salt sand. But we're going to keep working on them to get them covered. I know that every agency is fighting it. Of course, MINDOT has 24-hour crews, so the freeways look pretty good. But we're working on it, and those open areas where the wind blows across the road, when you do have that melt, it tends to catch that snow that blows. And so we're trying to work on those spots, and we'll keep the crews on them.
Yeah, well, we appreciate that work, but you know, people do have to be careful more than anything else out there, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move back to the public hearing.
Okay. We have just two fee changes, and Sarah will come up with Parks and the Auditor's Office, and I'll explain the fees, and then you can open the public hearing.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Public hearing this morning to propose two different changes to the fee schedule. So I'll let Chad and Ben each talk about the changes being proposed.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chad Martini from Land Management. So we have, Ben, do you mind if I start?
Nope.
Okay. We do have a fee request. There were some changes in Stockover Watershed, and they asked us to look at our fee structure for special assessments. Currently, our fee, our administrative fee for administering special assessments for municipalities' watersheds is $2.50 per parcel. I'm just going to walk you through. Okay, so what we see here is a map. So Stockover Watershed is creating sub-districts within their boundary, and they want to use those sub-districts and special assessments more on a project, a local project basis. And I'm just going to walk you through a quick scenario of why this becomes an issue for the watershed related to special assessments. So typically, a special assessment in a city might be 100 parcels, 100 properties. The city wants to raise $2,000 for some project. So our administrative fee at $2.50 per parcel on 100 parcels is $250. More than adequately covers our county input. With the way the watershed is going to these sub-districts, some of these districts might have 10,000 parcels in them. So from a special assessment standpoint, if a watershed wants to, say, raise $30,000 for a local project with 10,000 parcels, our administrative fee becomes $25,000 to raise $30,000. So the inequity in the administrative fee becomes obvious in this scenario based on the change that the watersheds want to implement. So Steve Holt House, our Land Records Coordinator, working with Randy and I, came up with a different fee structure, which puts us at, instead of $2.50 per parcel, we want, we are suggesting that we charge $150 project admin fee for any special assessment project, and then 20 cents per parcel thereafter. And then if there's revisions, because we often have to go back and forth with the entity, that's a $75 fee. But in that scenario, our 10,000 parcel special assessment in the watershed, then at 20 cents a parcel, gets us down to $2,000, which very closely mirrors what we see in other municipalities for our administrative costs for special assessments. So it's a formula that works with what the watershed wants to do moving forward with some of their projects, and also really doesn't move the meter up or down for our city partners with fees for special assessments. Randy, is there anything else I'm missing or that you want to make sure that we cover here?
Sarah, you did check with the City of St. Cloud, and I think the fee is looking at what we charged last year for the city would be about the same with the new structure for the city, and they were fine with the change in structure. So for municipalities, it should be pretty, pretty much the same, so.
Certainly, any questions I can help answer? Absolutely. I mean, it's, you know, when we worked with Sarah's group, worked with Steve and Land Records to go through our involvement, we actually think the new structure helps us better because it gives us the ability to have that revision fee where for having a lot of back and forth to get the numbers right, you know, it's a mechanism to kind of help cover those costs. So we feel it's fair and equitable between the city, watershed, or the county in terms of covering our time.
I'll ask about putting the 20 cent fee per parcel, then. How does that assess? Does it go onto the property tax for the following year? Or how does, how does that 20 cents get assessed? I don't want to spend more money assessing something than you're taking in.
Sarah, I can answer that, or do you want to talk about? It goes on the property tax statement.
Well, it's something that we built as a city, but the city or the watershed knows what those fees are upfront, so they typically add that into their project cost.
Okay.
So for example, if they were certifying my parcel $5 to, you know, that's my piece of the pie, right? That 20 cents, my assessment comes $5.20 because that's our administrative fee for basically brokering the dollars and administration of the collection of those dollars. Does that adequately? Okay.
Are we going to take the public hearings separately?
I think Ben has to, if you want to mention, you know, part of the fee would be appropriate.
Ben Anderson with the Parks Department. So a few months ago, the Parks embarked on reviewing the event policy. And part of that, there was some discussion that occurred within the Park Commission on whether we wanted to look at changing the event fees for for-profit and nonprofit organizations. Currently, for-profit organizations, 25% of the proceeds not to exceed $200 is what we would charge a for-profit organization to host an event within one of our parks or on our recreational trails. A nonprofit organization currently would be 5% of the proceeds not to exceed $150. After some discussion at their January meeting, the Park Commission feels that slight, so an increase would be appropriate. And for a for-profit organization, the Park Commission is recommending 10% of the gross registration fee not to exceed $500 would be paid for an event held within a park or on a recreational trail. And for a nonprofit organization, 5% of the proceeds not to exceed $200 would be paid for, to host such event. The motion passed by the Park Commission four to two. The two nays that were voted were for, were within concern of raising the nonprofit up to $200, and they would have preferred to see it stay at the $150. But ultimately, the vote did pass four to two by the Park Commission.
Questions on this change?
How much, how much event revenue growth is generated?
Typically, within a year, so last year, the Parks Department took in about $3,800.
$3,800?
Yep.
Okay.
If we were to raise this and all events were to come back as is, which we know they're not going to, Parks would take in about $5,500, so about a, you know, $1,000 difference.
I know with special events, you incur extra costs, so I see the merit of increasing fees. You know, you've got to weigh that against encouraging use of the facility. So I don't have any insight or wisdom on that. I'd be faking it if I offered comment.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to testify on the fee changes? Anyone wishing to testify on the fee changes? Last call. Anyone wishing to testify? If not, close the public hearing. Any more discussion? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Landsmeyer?
I'll second.
Second, Commissioner Mergon. Any more discussion? Not? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next item will go to his Environmental Services.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director, with Angie Berg. We have a few items here for you today. We will start with the discussion of the ordinance related to recreational vehicles.
Good morning, Angie Berg, Environmental Services. By way of background, we provided information in your packet related to recreational vehicle on individual lots. So don't think recreational vehicle parks or campgrounds. The Board modified the zoning ordinance in June of 2018, and that was basically to change from a criminal citation to the option of a, or a civil citation, rather, to an option of a criminal citation. So a ticket could be issued by law enforcement if properties were violating the ordinance of having more than one recreational vehicle on the site. In September of 2018, the Board directed the department to review the same ordinance again with the Planning Commission as a result of concerns that were raised by some residents in Eden Lake Township. On Packet Page 45 through Packet Page 48, we outlined basically the relevant facts, background information, and ultimately, what the Planning Commission recommended. The Planning Commission did recommend some changes back at their meeting in November. And if you'd like me to go through those right now, I can go through what their recommendations for change were. And that would start on Packet Page 3. I'm sorry, Packet Page 47. So the Planning Commission And so what they were recommending is that a recreational vehicle or vehicles on a single lot of record would be required to register with the county as a provisional use. Provisional uses don't have a fee associated with them, which, and they also don't require septic certification because they're not a permit, they're a registration. Some options that the Planning Commission discussed were how many RVs should be allowed on a single lot of record? Is it one? Is it two? Is it four? The Planning Commission's ultimate recommendation was allow up to four RV or tent sites and not tie that number to parcel size. And the reason they, they kept it at under four is because once you go more than four, a whole host of other restrictions come into play. Sites need to be licensed as a recreational campground, they have to have three acres, public, you have to have water testing, it's a whole different ballgame. Secondly, the Planning Commission for sewer and water recommended that the ordinance require applicants to show where will wastewater be on the property, where will people go to the bathroom if they're not in their RV, and then also water supply, will they have safe potable water on the property? Fourthly, the duration, so the Planning Commission also discussed how long should these RVs be allowed to sit on, on a property? And they recommended up to 20 calendar days per year. And frequency is up to four events per year. So there was some flexibility property owners could have when identifying, well, how long do they want to use their lot for a recreational vehicle purpose? They did recommend that notification to the neighbors be provided by the applicant, so neighbors would be informed by neighbors when this use was going to be occurring. They need to identify parking, quiet hours were recommended to be 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. Setbacks were, I guess, not, not consistent with what the normal setbacks would be on a recreational development lake. For example, the setback is 100 feet. Their recommendation was not located in the shore impact zone or bluff impact zone, shore impact zone being at 50 feet. So outside of the right of way, outside of the shore and bluff impact zone, and then 10 feet from property lines. And lastly, it was distance from neighboring homes. They did not recommend a setback from a neighboring home. So 100-foot lot with a home 10 foot away, as long as they're meeting their 10-foot setback, that would be allowed. We also did provide some county comparisons. I'm not going to go through those, but a couple of counties such as Stearns are dealing with this issue. You know, Benton's dealing with it, they have less shoreline. Sherburne's dealing with the same issue. Most other counties, Wright, Douglas, Becker, Morrison, we tried to look at some more of the lakes areas, they allow, they allow generally one, sometimes two, but then they limit it in times of duration. So the intent of us coming to today is to discuss if the board wants any changes to the ordinance and a couple of options that Shelley and I have been discussing. One would be you could schedule a public hearing and discuss this in the next month or two. Or secondly, the comprehensive plan is going to be hopefully going underway if the board approves that item today. And so with that, there could be a broader discussion, and public engagement will be a really strong component of the comprehensive plan update. So you would hear more from just the, this particular neighborhood that we're dealing with, and you would hear more from other, you know, different generations, not just your township or city folks, or your seasonal recreational property owners. You could hear from a wide range of people and rope that shoreline development piece, which we will have anyway with the comprehensive plan. So it's a unique opportunity. Instead of just fixing it again or trying to fix it again, I think you have time to delay it, changing, and get it, maybe get it right, and have some more discussion. So those would be really your two options. If you take no action today, the ordinance remains as is. If you take action to not change anything but encourage this to be part of the comprehensive plan process, then we will, we will place on hold any pending enforcement that we have on various properties. We would not take action under the ordinance to enforce those regulations until we have a broader discussion. That's all I have.
I'll start with a question. If we delay it for the comprehensive plan, then they will still have the opportunity for a public hearing at the time of the comprehensive plans reviewed? Or even giving input with the construction of the comprehensive plan? And then if they don't like it, even when we adopt the comprehensive plan, there'll be a public hearing on that? Is that not correct?
Correct. Both.
Yeah, my suggestion, exactly. Any opportunity to condense the misery makes sense.
Commissioner Mergan?
I think items two, or one and two here should have been flip-flopped because we need a discussion, first of all, whether we're going to approve this comprehensive plan, which is already way over budget. And I, just looking at what the Planning Commission recommended here, it sounds very reasonable and well thought out to me.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Clark?
One of the things that I thought made sense about having the broader discussion, a couple of things in the, within the comprehensive plan, is one, right now, we don't know what the impact on our staff would be. This is a pretty, there are some parts of this that could be a significant enough change that if somebody or multiple properties would be coming in several times a year, what, what does that look like? What's the impact on, potential impact on law enforcement, the coordinated pieces? This may, what the Planning Commission has put forward may work well for this particular area, but it may or may not for the rest of the communities, and they haven't really been part of that conversation. So for me, as I was mulling it over, on the one hand, it seemed reasonable. On the other hand, we're about to embark, I believe, on, on a process that ought to help us really hopefully not have to revisit this next year again. So those were a couple of my thoughts.
Okay. So then, for this coming summer, we'll be under the present plan, and we'll work under those, and that'll also then be complaint-driven, as it has been in the past?
Mr. Chair, correct. And it is complaint-driven, and as I said, Shelley and I discussed how would we handle the, the current violations that we're aware of? We have approximately, right now, I think about six. And they would be just held in abeyance. We wouldn't look at enforcing under the terms of the ordinance until we have an opportunity to have this discussion further. Property owners would be notified that, that they are in violation of a current ordinance, however, we're going through a process to discuss it. I have a list of them. I don't want to not inform people that they're in violation of something, but I also want to inform them that it might change. So that's how we would handle it.
Then, we're not looking for a motion, are we just looking for consensus and agreement here then?
Yes. It sounds like no action is the best action.
Okay. All right. I'm good with that.
We can do that.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the, the next item on the agenda is the comprehensive plan. The consultant?
Yes. Packet page 50. Back in November, the county board authorized distribution of requests for proposal on a comprehensive plan. The last plan was updated in 2010 with Commissioner Lenzmeyer, the only commissioner at that time on the, on the board. We are looking to award the contract...
Almost in the universe.
The recommended action is to award the contract to Hoyzington-Cobler Group. And we had a review committee consisting of the administrator, Mike Williams, Shelley Benson, myself. I asked to review the website component, and also Bill Davison, the purchasing director. He managed the, the whole process. Benefits of a comprehensive plan are to look at vision for the future, set long-range goals, and that could be for land use, shoreline, parks, transportation, economic development. The exciting part of this plan, as we shared with you back in November, is it's going to be website-driven. And, you know, the idea with that is that, you know, the public, as you know, is increasingly demanding more service, transparent service, quicker service. And so we want to have this information more readily available on the website. So part of the, the contract is to have a website component early on the project, so it'll be a project website. And then at the end of the comprehensive plan, the plan will be web-driven. And so that's an exciting part. What you'll receive with the new comprehensive plan is you're going to receive an extensive public engagement process. So we're not just going to have a couple of open houses, we're going to do, we're actually, you know, we'll be meeting with the consultant soon if the board approves it to look at, you know, social media and pop-up, they call it pop-up, pop-up events. So they could go to breakfast on the farm, or they could go to, you know, various fairs throughout Stearns County and get input from people while they're there instead of making people go to a meeting. So that makes a lot of sense. I think it most importantly is this process will facilitate policy discussion that the board has been, that a lot of boards have been struggling with related to growth and development. For example, in St. Wendell Township, we'd be dealing with a lot of concerns there, rural businesses, shooting ranges, solar, all the things that the commissioners had been looking at over the last few years. So our recommendation is to award the contract to Hoyzington-Cobler Group.
Okay. First of all, questions? Commissioner Clark?
Mr. Chair, could you talk to us a little bit about the overall cost? Because it says phase one, is there multiple phases? Is this a cap? Could you, just so that us as well as the public could have that information in front of us?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Clark, I think, I'm not sure how the phase one portion got added in, but it is intended as an all-encompassing, one action, one phase, one project, not two phases. So the budget is reflected with the $250,000 now for that purpose. We are looking to complete the entire project and not any additional phases after that.
If I might just add to that, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Clark, that even when we budgeted the dollars in 2018, we thought this would kind of be a multi-year deal, so we, we phased the dollars, and I don't really know why we did that in the end because we're using the project fund, and we could have just well budgeted the whole amount.
Right.
But that's why I turned it phase one, to illustrate why we needed to add more money to the project. We came into it knowing that we were going to need more than that, I think.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mergan?
I'm going to have a hard time supporting this. It's already $31,000 over budget, where we had the $200,000. And then I have also here a comprehensive plan that was done, and this one says 2030 on it. And this one, as I understand it, is more comprehensive than the one that we're proposing here. And I'm thinking that most of the things that Angie mentioned that have been thought through quite a bit already and can be done without spending another quarter million dollars, this is, to me, one of those things that's predicated on the belief that the taxpayers have unlimited funds, which they don't have. So I think it's more financially prudent to deal with these zoning issues and things as they come up. You have any idea, Shelley, did you find out what the cost of this one was?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mergan, we did ask, and Angie didn't have a number on that. I did ask Steve Hamis if he could look into finding out what that exact number was. I think he was going to go back. Our purchasing agent, Bill Davison, is out of the office this week, so I couldn't contact him for that information. I believe it was more than the current cost of this plan, but I don't know the exact number. I think the value again is, is that public engagement process. We're looking to add the value back into this process by making sure we talk to a broad range of people across the demographics that we haven't always captured. And as well, I think Angie had mentioned, we've only had one commissioner that will be partaking in this process that did the last one. And to have, capture your ideas and your thoughts as we move forward policy-wise is very helpful. So cost-wise, I don't know an exact number. We are looking to find that, so we can get that to you.
Sure. Is it heart attack urgent to approve this today? We can get those answers and, and provide it to us as you find out. And if we get enough information, conceivably, this might even be a consent agenda item for the next meeting. I don't know. What do you think, folks?
I'd have a hard time with this on the consent agenda.
You could pull it, and you could pull it for...
Yeah, you could pull it and ask for detail.
Yeah. Mr. Clark?
A question I have is, goes back to your question, I think, about timing, since this is about awarding the contract, if we're delaying, does that impact when we would be starting, or does it make much difference?
It will put us back a little process-wise, but I, you know, it's up to you as the commissioners if that's what direction you'd like to go.
But you're amazing people.
We would agree with you.
Yeah, it's not like the consultant has, that they have a timeframe that they can withdraw their bid or anything like that.
Right.
If we waited two weeks, you'd be, I mean, you'd be okay in that way, you're not going to lose this proposal or anything like that. But it'll set you back a couple of weeks.
Personally, I'd like to move it forward. And we've got the Planning Commission is looking to make some changes and, and get some things going. I know some of the townships have issues that they want to get rolling as well. I have a couple of questions. First of all, the 2030 plan that Commissioner Mergan has there, when was that actually completed approximately?
Mr. Chair, it was started, the process started in 2008, and it was adopted in 2010.
Okay. So it's eight to 10 years old we're looking at. And then the other point I guess I would like to make is, we had done that rather lengthy survey to the, to the county, and I believe there may be some information too that might be useful in that survey as far as some of the guidelines or things that we were doing well or things that needed to be improved that might be applied to the comprehensive plan. And so that information, I think, is quite relevant as far as moving forward for improvements in the county. So I'd like to make sure that that's not overlooked or is included in part of the plan. Commissioner Clark?
Just, I guess, a question back. It sounds like it's not so much that it's going to cost more than originally anticipated, but that you were looking at doing the budget piece over more than one year. So this would put it all together, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, can you talk a little bit about the added value, again, about citizen resident participation? Having been through a number of comprehensive plans or other planning processes, oftentimes the broader people who one is hoping to, a board would be hoping to really get input from, they may not be. It sounds like there's going to be an opportunity or a real effort really to try to get some significant citizen engagement with this that may go to more of a micro level on some of the topics coming in front of us. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Clark, yes. And the idea behind that again is so we're not just focused on township and city elected and appointed officials and, and people who want to attend a meeting on a Thursday night in Melrose. You know, we're looking at trying to engage the broader community through, again, use of social media, use of this project website. People can go and they can vote on what they like, what they don't like. There's an opportunity for, in this particular contract, the consultant would have an interactive map, where you could go, click on a point in Stearns County, say what you like, what you don't like, what is it you like about it, what don't you? City St. Cloud had a similar process when they reviewed their last comprehensive plan. And so, again, it's, it's a wider range of the public that we're hoping to gauge through this process. And, and that's what will help you make easier decisions when you're reviewing your zoning ordinance updates. Otherwise, your, your zoning ordinance updates are going to be narrow, they're going to be based on what was decided in 2006 and '08. So that's the importance of updating the plan, hearing from your constituents on the changes that they've seen over the last 10 years.
Mr. Chair, it sounds too then that, like Commissioner Mergan, I do get concerned about costs. So part of the question is, is if we're looking forward over the next 10 years, it sounds like staff would have better information also than to bring back to the board with this. It may not be quite so piecemeal, project per project. We would have an opportunity perhaps to impact staff time because we will have updated this. Is that a reasonable thought?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Clark, I think that's true. I think the further you are away from the point that you had that previous plan, the harder the decisions are, the more time it takes us to, to review, to try to gather as much information, policy changes, other, other information. So the closer you are to the, to the time of the plan, the easier it is for us to help provide that information out. We do try to get updated information regardless of when we bring information forward, but it is helpful to have a point in time reference as well. I think that's... Uh, we do try to get updated information regardless of, of when we bring information forward, but it is helpful to have a point in time reference as well. I think that makes it easier for everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
What?
Uh, we're looking at perhaps moving this forward.
I had a nice nap going, please.
Anyway, we're looking at perhaps moving this forward rather than delaying it, uh, so that we can get it moving.
So it sounds like Joe wants a motion.
Yes.
Okay, I'll move it, let's see where it goes.
Okay, I got a motion to approve?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Clark, any more discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have that?
I have. Do you want me to take a roll call?
No, I think we're good.
Okay. Everybody voted yes for Commissioner Morgan.
And absentee?
Yep.
Okay, uh, next item?
The next item we have is the authorization to create a joint airport zoning board for the city of Sauk Center. Um, this is a fairly commonplace action. So in the case of Sauk Center, they would like to have some land use control and some discussion with the adjoining parties to the municipal airport. So this is the process to do that. So it's a joint, it's a resolution to create the joint planning, uh, board for the airport zoning. And there is a resolution in your packet.
Okay. Questions on the resolution?
Is this, um, do you anticipate or do you see a county board member on this?
No, it was the desire not to have elected officials, so it would be staff persons. So we are looking for Heidi Wenskowski and myself to be the representatives, um, for that board.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? If not, uh, looking for a motion to approve that?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan?
Second.
Second by Lenzmeyer? No other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion passes. Okay, anything else?
I have no other items unless you have anything for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move to the final item, which is, uh, issues by commissioners. First of all, Randy down on the end of the bench?
Don't have anything.
Okay. Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
I wanna meet the new guy in the Sheriff's Department.
Oh, okay, yeah. You, you wanna come up, over and introduce yourself?
Absolutely.
Come on up. I think, go to the microphone here. Yeah, yeah, they'll, right there.
If you're gonna talk a lot, you can sit.
I'm too new to talk a lot. I gotta learn what I gotta do first before I take a look at things. Uh, my name is Dan Miller. Um, I, Cold Spring resident, uh, lived there for the last 23 years, uh, worked in Cold Spring PD for four years. Um, prior, or after that, I went to the city of Sartell.
The great city of Sartell?
Yeah, worked for Mr. Persky, uh, as mayor in Sartell, worked there for 14 years, um, nine of which I was assigned to the Central Minnesota Task Force and which later became votive. The last four years, I've been down in Meeker County, which is my home county, um, as the chief deputy there. Um, so I worked there for the last four years prior to coming here. So I'm excited, I got a lot to learn and I gotta just get going, so I'm excited.
How big, uh, what's the head count in the Meeker County Sheriff's Department?
Um, about 50 full-time employees, um, roughly 25 licensed deputies.
If you can break down the Meeker staff into ages, uh, how many would be under 30? How many would be 30 to 35 and then older?
Our, our deputy staff is fairly young or was fairly young. We, we had, uh, some retirements and some turnover. Um, unfortunately, we had three deputies criminally charged and terminated in my first, uh, two years. And so we had some, we had some turnover. Um, so I would say our deputy staff was fairly young. Our correctional, correctional staff was, um, kind of a little bit of, um, all of the above, um, which we have, they had some retirements coming up here shortly. Um, and, you know, like dispatch staff was fairly, um, on the upper level of that where we've had, I don't think they've had a full-time hire in their dispatch center for six years. So a fairly seasoned staff in their dispatch center and not a lot of turnover there, so.
How much, uh, you're, you're younger folks, huh? I, I realize that, uh, you know, sheriff's departments are something, would need to have something of a command and control type of, uh, supervisory environment, but to what extent, uh, did your millennials and Xers, uh, have reasonable input into the process? Isn't always genius, but, you know, how much, uh, interface? And I don't know anything about that organization, so it'd be helpful for me.
So it was a smaller department, so I would say, like, my direct, I was a direct supervisor over the dispatch staff, over the detective staff, um, and I was the emergency management director for Meeker County. Um, so I had a lot of day-to-day, um, interaction with the staff. Um, and I think it was pretty consistent because during the daytime, I was the, the patrol sergeant slash, um, dispatch sergeant slash everything. So I had day-to-day contact with the deputies, um, you know, on a regular basis. And I think, you know, it's changed a lot, um, the, the people coming up, like you said, the millennials has changed a lot and it's changed a lot of the way that, um, you communicate with them. But I think it's something that we talked to them on a regular basis and we allowed, you know, we made sure our door was open at all times and you could come in and, you know, bring concerns and able to, uh, you know, meet with them and discuss stuff with them.
Up to four or five years ago in our department, uh, while the millennials didn't complain up the food chain, they complained to me and maybe the others, I don't know. But, uh, it's a tougher management, that this is, this isn't unique to Sheriff's Department. All organizations, uh, uh, management of, uh, younger staff is challenging.
You know, and I think just the, um, you know, the workforce is not there. Um, when I applied at Sartell back in 2001, uh, there was 152 applicants for my position. And now I talked to Chief Hughes up there recently, I think they had 25 applicants for a position. Um, you know, and down in Meeker County, we had the same thing where we had, we just hired three correction, full-time correctional staff and I think we had 12 applications. Um, you know, the, the workforce just isn't there and the, the quality of candidates in, isn't what it used to be.
Oh yeah, the younger folks are believing what they see on TV, what they read on the internet. Thank you.
Well, Dan, welcome aboard. Appreciate you bringing your expertise and of course, you're not new, you, you have the connections with many people and the operations of the county, so.
Yeah.
Looking for good things.
I'm excited to get going and like I said, I got a lot to learn, so thank you very much.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan, anything?
Nothing.
Commissioner Clark?
I know that you're also interested in this, I wonder if we could just do a quick update on what's happened with regard to the animal shelter and kind of the impact on, on, on Stearns County.
Okay, I think I can, I think I can help a little bit, but, um, and if the sheriff or chief deputy has anything to add, I'm sure they will, but, um, and you had an email from Captain Lenz last night, which really is a synopsis of, of where, where we were on this, but as you know, there was a citizen complaint and a subsequent intervention by the Sauk Rapids Police, I believe, um, last week during the really cold weather. And, um, as a result of that, our sheriff's department suspended use of the facility as did the city of St. Cloud. I would not call us a heavy user of that facility. We had one animal in there at the time and, uh, they're, they're gonna find a place for that animal, I'm told, and I think we saw that in the email too. And you saw some statistics there that in a past year, we had maybe 44 dogs and one cat in that facility throughout, oh, the whole calendar year. So I would not call us a heavy user, but nevertheless, we are, we definitely are a user of that. And you also saw that Ms. Tentner has, has told us and others that, uh, she will close the facility in the next three months or so. And where we go from there as far as, as a shelter, um, I, I'm not really sure. I know that we currently have some arrangements with the Melrose Veteran, Veterinarian Clinic. And I don't, and I think those are all, those discussions are all still in the works. We also know that Tri-County Humane Society is, is at least doing fundraising to do in addition. Um, I, and I, I cannot tell you where they are with that exactly either, but, you know, my last conversations with, uh, the leadership there was they were, you know, involved heavily in a, in a fundraising so they can, uh, build a new building there, so. Um, but where we go in the future, I think, uh, the sheriff's office is working on that and, uh, I think there's just gonna be more to come on that. And if you guys have anything to add, please do.
I think you summed it up pretty good. Space is an issue, so just finding space.
Commissioner Clark, anything else?
Yeah, the only other thing I was gonna bring up is we, obviously are, several of us are gonna be going down to the Capitol later on this week, uh, regarding transportation-related issues, a critical topic, I know, for, for residents in our county and for the businesses who either work in or around. And hopefully that'll be a good opportunity to be reminding, uh, the people who will be passing a budget that transportation really is a critical need.
Mike, anything else?
Uh, nothing else.
Okay, all right. I just have a couple of items, yeah, Commissioner Clark is correct, we're gonna be down on Transportation Day on Thursday down to St. Paul and, of course, a good number of transportation issues that are very important to us here in Central Minnesota. Uh, also, the following week, we have, uh, uh, Association of Minnesota Counties, uh, that, uh, conference going on, so we'll, we'll be addressing other issues down in St. Paul at that time. And, and I will be with the APO in, uh, DC, working on some federal funding perhaps or some of the local projects. So, uh, looking forward to having that articulation with our, uh, state and federal, uh, representatives. Uh, other than that, I don't have anything other than be safe out there on the roads. Uh, also, we got Valentine's Day before, remember the people you love in your life, so.
Sounds like a cheesecake in my future.
Yeah, there you go. With that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Some of.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. We're adjourned.